I would like to call the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, October 18th. The time is seven o'clock. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solora?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Kurt Waldron?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Would you all rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands our nation on your god and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that there are any addendums or changes to the agenda. What I will reiterate, because typically when we have capacity crowds, we will have Student of the Month in building highlights. And so what I'm going to do is, you know, as we move through the different buildings, I'll give specific instructions in terms of, you know, when we, when I dismiss certain schools so that we can allow our high school staff and their students to be acknowledged. And then after that time, we will again dismiss all our parents and students, or again of those who want to stay. And then those who are out in the lobby will be able to come in and take a seat. So we appreciate your patience in all of this, and thank you for attending tonight's board meeting.
Mr. Curtis, may I at this point ask for Action Item H2 to be separated?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll separate out H2.
Do you need me to be specific as to which?
Nope. Yeah, no problem. Point of order. Any other adjustments to the, to the agenda?
Mr. Curtis, there's a typo on the extracurricular supplemental contracts under Ms. Loudon. The split should be with Lisa Fontana.
I see.
That was a typo.
Okay. Point of order. We will make sure that we rectify that with revised, revised staff by extracurricular. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the communications and the Board President's report. Good evening and welcome families and staff of Wilcox Primary School, George G. Dodge Intermediate, and Twinsburg High School, administrative staff, and other residents of the Twinsburg community, as well as the city of Twinsburg. I'm Mark Curtis, and it is my privilege to be your Board President. Time has certainly flown by as we near the end of the first grading period and heading into our homecoming festivities. Good luck to our homecoming court, and good luck to our Tiger football team. Our administrators continue to also focus on the business of educating our children. Tonight, the Board will vote to accept each building's continuous improvement plan, which has been previously approved by the district's Curriculum and Technology Subcommittee. Now, these plans are created under the auspices of the district's overall goals, with an eye on addressing building-specific areas in need of improvement and program enrichment. At the recommendation of the superintendent, we will continue to provide the resources necessary in achieving each of these goals. The superintendent, on behalf of our district, continues to be engaged in our, with our legislative body, as well as service on the Executive Board of the Alliance for Adequate Education. Specifically, work toward addressing the continued reductions in state funding, as well as academic accountability measures that do not accurately reflect student progress remain high on the list of priorities in making progress. Additionally, the superintendent recently provided proponent testimony on House Bill 266 to the House Transportation and Public Safety Committee, a bill that allows for the creation of a Tiger license plate whereby the school district will receive a portion of the proceeds. The bill was passed out of committee unanimously. I also stay engaged in working with Representative Christina Rogner in making progress on getting House Bill 87 signed into law. Recall that this piece of legislation is designed to allow districts to receive funds originally diverted to charter schools in the event a charter school has a finding of recovery by the Ohio Department of Education or the Auditor of State. Currently, the bill remains in the House Government and Accountability Oversight Committee, where I also previously provided proponent testimony. Our goal is to get this passed out of committee and onto the Senate for further consideration. As always, we'll continue to keep the community abreast as the status changes. Finally, I wish to address the community regarding the employment and discipline of any district employees. The administration, as well as the Board of Education, are committed to following specific guidelines that are designed to protect the employees' rights to due process, as well as their privacy. State statute does not allow certain information to be disclosed publicly for these reasons. Our goal has always been to ensure that we adhere to these parameters and guidelines so that the integrity of the process is not jeopardized. It is our hope that the community and others understand this approach, and also our obligation in affording due process to all district employees. This concludes my President's Report. I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see everyone here this evening to celebrate some outstanding kids who work really hard every day here in our buildings. Mr. Curtis, you mentioned homecoming. We have a number of events that are planned here, and I hope that lots of our families are able to join us. First of all, tomorrow night, on Thursday, October 19th, is our annual Homecoming Parade. It kicks off at 5:30 PM, right over across the street here on McCarrian Parkway. It'll cross over Ravenna, up Tiger Trail, and spill over to Tiger Stadium. And once at the stadium, we're going to have an introduction of our Homecoming Court, and there will be a special performance by our Twinsburg High School Tiger Marching Band. So I hope you're able to join us. The weather is supposed to be fantastic tomorrow night, so we hope to see everyone out for our Homecoming Parade. And I understand we've got some outstanding floats this year, thanks in part to our Twinsburg Athletic Boosters. On Friday, October 20th, is the Homecoming Game against the Hudson Explorers. And pre-game, we will have an introduction of our Homecoming Court this time with their parents, and then, of course, the football kickoff. At halftime, the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters will be inducting their newest class into the Twinsburg Athletic Hall of Fame, so that should be an exciting event. And then, of course, the Twinsburg High School Marching Band will once again take the field along with the mighty band from Hudson High School. So we look forward to a great show, and good luck to our Tigers. And then, of course, on Saturday, the 21st, our high school students are excited about the annual Homecoming Dance. And we'd like to thank Mrs. Turingo and so many staff members up at Twinsburg High School who have planned just a wonderful, wonderful week of homecoming activities. It should be a tremendous event for all who participate, and we invite you to see the parade and the game on Thursday and Friday of this week. In addition to our homecoming festivities, we just want to wish the best of luck to so many of our Tigers who are in postseason play. We have a tournament game across the street tonight, soccer. And I was at volleyball last night. Volleyball again is tomorrow night. And there's another soccer game, I think, tomorrow night as well. So there's lots to do here in the school district. If you're looking for something to do in the evening or on the weekend, please check out all of the latest dates on the district website, where we keep the most up-to-date information available to you. Board of Education, once again this year, our school district is proud to sponsor the Second Annual Fill the Bus Campaign. It's in partnership with the Emergency Assistance Center and our friends at the Nordonia Hills City School District. This is a very important event for the Emergency Assistance Center. You know, between holidays, oftentimes the shelves and the pantry go bare. And so, you know, we had the event in the summer, the Fill a Bag event here in our community, and this is the next event before the holiday season, where we're asking our students and our staff, community members, and local businesses to help us to fill one of our yellow school buses, and then our friends over in Nordonia are doing likewise. This happened during the week of October 23rd through the 27th, and there will be collection bins at each of our five schools, as well as at the Board of Education office. And on the evening of the football game versus the Nordonia nights, there will be our school bus parked outside the main gate, along with one of the Nordonia Hills school buses. We'll have to wait and see which bus is filled with more non-perishable foods for the Emergency Assistance Center. So it's just a fun little competition, and it means a great deal to those members of our community who are food insecure. So we thank you for your consideration in helping us to fill the yellow school bus, on behalf of our school district, but certainly for those who so much depend on the Emergency Assistance Center. Attention parents of our high school freshmen and sophomores, there's an important date I'm going to ask you to put on your calendar, and that is Wednesday, November 29th. That will be the Chromebook Initiative rollout meeting for our parents of our freshman and sophomore students at Twinsburg High School. The meeting will take place at seven o'clock over at the auditorium at the high school, and we'll be getting more information out to you. But if you want to mark that on your calendar now, it will be an important meeting for you to learn about the Chromebook Initiative and what it means to your freshman or your sophomore. And believe it or not, as Mr. Curtis mentioned, we're practically at the end of the first quarter of the year. The first quarter ends this Friday, October 20th. Report cards will be distributed within one week, and we wish all of our Tigers much success as we continue on in the 17-18 school year. So without further ado, we have a lot of wonderful students to celebrate. I'd like to ask Ms. Lynn Villa and Mr. Scott Asti to come forward, because I know Wilcox rocks because of some outstanding students. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Powers and community. It brings me great privilege, these four meetings, to come and introduce some fabulous students and teachers and our nice parents as well for making some of these students great.
We have the Wilcox Rocks Because of Me Award, and it's a little slogan we say around Wilcox to really make the students really stand out, who are being respectful, responsible, caring, and safe students, and great friends coming in the doors. So without anything further, I'm going to say a student's name and invite them to come up, and then if, I'll introduce their teacher as well. And if their teacher's here, they could come up as well, and read a little bit about why each of them rocks. Our first student is a first grader, Marissa Eeny, in Ms. Lipton's class. Come on up, Marissa. Ms. Lipton says that Marissa's an all-star student. She is always willing to help everyone in the classroom. And she's not only a helper, but an excellent student, too. She's an excellent role model to all the children at Wilcox. And Marissa says that Ms. Lipton is really funny and nice, too. And whenever her students do tests and do not know the answer, she reminds them to tap out the letter sounds to get it right. Ms. Lipton makes Wilcox rock. Our next student is Mia Sorik, in Mrs. Kane's class. Mia's been nominated because she demonstrates great responsibility. She listens and follows directions the very first time. She is always respectful and looking out for others. She is often the first to notice when someone is feeling sad or left out, and she jumps right in to be a great friend. Mia's a deep thinker who can very eloquently explain concepts to her peers. And she says that Ms. Kane is a very special teacher who's often funny and kind. She sometimes even talks in different voices and lets her students go outside for recess. Mrs. Kane rocks because she has her students kiss their brains whenever they get a math question right. Our next student is Kiara Walker, in Mr. Hill's class. Come on up, Kiara. Mr. Hill says that Kiara is such a pleasure to have in class. He can always count on her to be on task and ready to work. She is friendly with her classmates and a great helper. Nice job, he says. And she says that Mr. Hill is really funny and has his students laugh a lot. He says their names in different voices and calls to their different groups, different sports teams' names, which makes the learning fun. Kiara was excited to spend her Tiger cash she had earned to have lunch with Mr. Hill. Our next student is Chinuli Rupasinghe, in Mrs. Littler's class. Come on up. Chinuli is new to the Twinsburg City Schools, but she's made a great transition into Wilcox. She has made many friends in her class and is always a kind person with nice manners. Chinuli is always gauged in class activities and puts forth her best effort at all times. Chinuli greets Mrs. Littler each morning with a gorgeous smile on her face. And she says that Mrs. Littler is so nice and smiles a lot. In math, Mrs. Littler helps her students learn what the second digit is when adding doubles. Mrs. Littler has her students kiss their brains also when they get something correct in class. Mrs. Littler makes Wilcox rock. Our next group of students are kindergartners, and I'd like to welcome up Patrick Costigan, in Mrs. Hannah's class. Come on up, Patrick. Patrick comes into school each morning with a smile on his face and a positive attitude. He is eager to help others in the classroom, including Mrs. Hannah. He is a positive role model for everyone, and he follows the Wilcox pledge each and every day. And he says that Mrs. Hannah is so kind because she helps Patrick whenever he doesn't know an answer. She helps him spell hard words like "can" by sounding out the letter sounds. Mrs. Hannah makes Wilcox rocks because she lets her students write numbers on their Our next student is Monasveeney Chetabuktooney, in Ms. Miller's class. Come on up, Monasveeney. Monasveeney is a responsible and hard-working student in the classroom. She never gives up and persists in every aspect of school. She always models good behavior and is respectful to both Wilcox friends and staff. Monasveeney welcomes everyone during play and work and is always lending a hand to a friend in need. And she says that Ms. Miller is very sweet because she makes her students do fun activities with recycled materials, like make toilet paper rolls and milk cartons into rocket ships. One time, Ms. Miller helped Monasveeney zip up her backpack when it was time to go home. Ms. Miller is very kind, and because of that, Monasveeney wants to make her a purple paper Our next student is Giada Petiti, in Mrs. Perro's class. Giada always has a smile on her face and a positive attitude with everything she does. Whenever someone helps Giada, is always willing to help any way she can. She is an excellent role model, as she follows the Wilcox pledge every day. Wilcox rocks because of Giada. And she says that Mrs. Perro is so helpful. One day, she helped Giada spell a super-long word, like "birthday," by having her tap out the letter sounds. Mrs. Perro is also very kind because she lets her students do fun crafts like coloring. Mrs. Perro rocks. And our final student is Kennedy Belcher, in Ms. Washington's class. Come on up, Kennedy. Kennedy is a pleasure to have in class. She's an enthusiastic learner and willing participant in classroom activities. She's always displaying the Wilcox characteristics of being responsible, respectful, caring, and safe. And she said that Ms. Washington is a fun teacher because she has her students write sight words on the whiteboards. She is also very helpful, and one time she helped Kennedy with her glue top, to get her glue top off her stick. Another time, she helped her fold up paper spider legs back and forth to be crinkled. I gotta tell you, interviewing these kindergarten and first graders has really become an art. It's just wonderful. But again, Kennedy and the other Wilcox Rock students. If I could have all students hold up their signs in front of them, and teachers, too, and teachers, too. You could hold up your sign in front of you, not covering your face, but just down in front of your tummy. And this is a great photo opportunity for all those parents out there. One more round of applause for all our Wilcox Rocks Because of Me students. Ms. Villa has a few words to introduce a really cool initiative that we started at Wilcox this year that'll just take a couple minutes. So sit tight and enjoy.
Boys and girls and our teachers, you make us very proud. You did a great job. Board of Education, I'm really happy tonight to introduce to you a new program that we started at Wilcox this year, and families. I think a lot of you probably already know about it. We called it Mindful Music Moments. And to give you a little bit of background, I went down to the OAESA Conference in June, and I met a woman named Stacy Sims. She runs an organization called City Silence down in the Cincinnati area. And I started to talk to her, and I went to one of her sessions about mindfulness. And it sort of connected with some of the things that we had been noticing in our building. Sometimes we see staff members and students come in a little bit stressed, the weight of the world on their shoulders, and school should be fun. So I had been thinking about what could we do, and then met Stacy, and everything connected for us. Stacy's program offered us an opportunity to take a moment in our day, relax, breathe, and just be present. And at the same time, we get to share some world-class music with our students. Stacy started her program in the Cincinnati area. She started working with some troubled youth, and then started to talk to teachers. And the first school she went to was the Academy of World Languages in Cincinnati, and then expanded to 40 different schools. And this year, for the Cleveland Orchestra's 100th anniversary, she has now partnered with the Cleveland Orchestra. So she's in 60 schools, expanding up in this area, and we are lucky enough to be listening to music from the Cleveland Orchestra every morning. So what happened here is Stacy came to a staff development meeting. She met with our staff. We talked about brain development, how trauma, stress, anxiety can affect us physically and mentally. Our staff had a chance to experience what Mindful Music Moments is all about, and asked their questions about how are we really going to get 600 little ones to sit for five minutes? We had some strategies to learn how to make this routine for our children, things like, and you can see in this particular picture, one of the things Stacy said is that having some pressure on your spine, whether you're sitting up against a wall, or you're sitting with someone behind you, can give you that grounded feeling, could lay down on the floor. She talked about not, if the children were wiggly, not to make, don't make them sit, that they'll get into this routine eventually. And then we followed up with a parent letter, some things on social media, and then at our first PTA meeting of the year, our parents experienced what mindful music is all about. And then our students started right after Labor Day. So a couple of the things that Stacy taught us, and this is one of her slides, is that everyone is born, this is about brain development. Everyone is born with that base of your brain developing, with that fight-or-flight-survival instinct. And then as you grow, the emotional center and the executive center of your brains, your brain continues to grow. And that happens for, that's happening for our Wilcox students right now, and it continues on into adulthood. But our three-to-seven-year-olds are really working on developing how they process their emotions, responding to stress, self-regulation, problem-solving, and their attention. And I found this slide that she shared with us really interesting, because most of us are in that green kind of wavey line. It's how we deal with the normal challenges of our day-to-day. Things happen. We get a little bit upset or emotional. Things settle down. We go back down. But I'm sure all of us know people who are stuck on "on." Those are the people whose engines are always running. They're high-energy. They are maybe hyper, we might call them. And we probably all know people who are stuck on "off." Sometimes with a flat F fact, you're kind of down or sad. I kind of think about Eeyore in Winnie the Pooh, kind of like that. So the idea is to get everybody back into that middle area and being able to handle the stresses of every day. And mindfulness can help you be centered. We want everyone, all of our students, all of our staff, all of our community, to be able to react more evenly to the changes and the challenges that life brings. So what happens in mindfulness in school is that we listen to this world-class music every day, bringing us a sense of calm. These are all our students, by the way. Our students have listened to music like John Williams' Olympic Fanfare, Beethoven, Mahler's Symphony Number Six, and this week, we're listening to a Vivaldi Violin Concerto. The students listen to the same piece five times. There's a voiceover every day that introduces the music. On the first day, we get some little history about the music, and then each day, there's something else. And there are always the mindful breathing, the mindful sensing, and noticing. She might talk to us about focusing on an object. The week that we were listening to the Olympic Fanfare, one of the days, she talked about how athletes have to focus. And then the students were asked to find something across the room to focus on. We talk about how the music makes us feel. We listen to how the music makes us feel. We notice the different instruments. She says, what do you imagine? It really gets the students thinking beyond just some sitting here listening to this So how it works at us, works for us, is it's a daily morning ritual. At 8:40 every day, it's after student arrival, after attendance is taken. We all take a break. We stop, and the music comes on. There's a little bit of an intro. And like I said, the first day, there's always some history about the piece. We talk about things like tempo. I'm going to play for you one piece. And I didn't choose this because it's the most calming piece. I chose it because it's the shortest piece. I know we're in a interest of time here. But on this week, when we listen to The Flight of the Bumblebees, we imagine how the bumblebee felt. Was he angry? Was he nervous? Was he excited? Was he really busy? And we also practice a new type of breathing, where there was actually a vocalization in it that sounded a little bit like a bumblebee. So it's very much geared toward our students. So if I click, will it work? Okay. So if you would humor me a little bit and give it a try, everybody, if you'd like to give it a try, boys and girls, Wilcox boys and girls, you know what to do, so show your grown-ups. Oh, sorry, I, Jan, I don't have my phone on me either. I could play it there. There we go.
It's the last day for Flight of the Bumblebee, so let's get ready to listen. Put your feet on the floor, hands on your lap or on your desk.
Oh, you're good sports. Good job.
Sit down nice and tall. Close or focus your eyes. And find your breath. Various instruments play the melody throughout Flight of the Bumblebee. In the beginning of the piece, the strings play the part of the bumblebee. Listen for the point in the music where the flute and other wind instruments take over the melody.
Fantastic job.
We'll be back next week with more mindful music moments.
So that's Stacy that you hear, and she always introduces it the same way each time. Close and focus your eyes. Put your hand, you know, put your feet flat on the floor, and then always ends it in the end with, that was a fantastic job. And then what happens in the middle is a little bit different. And that was the shortest piece that we had, two minutes or so. Most of them, all of them are under five minutes. The first day of the week is the longest. The first day of the week is the longest just because she gives some history and background of what the piece is about. We love that it's happening five times so the children become really familiar with it. So I guess the question is, right now, how's it going? So about five or six weeks in, we are in a routine. Everybody knows it's coming. Teachers have access to all of the content online. So they have the option to use it again during the day. Teachers have told me they've used it before a test, after recess, when the kids come in and they're all hyped up, if they need a brain break during the day. I had a preschooler, a morning preschooler, so he's a younger preschooler, come in yesterday morning. And he said, Ms. Villa, my favorite time of the day is mindful music moments. And I chuckled at that because here's this little guy telling me that. And I said, well, Jase, what do you do? And he said, I do this. And he closed his eyes and he kind of moved to the music. And I said, that's awesome. We're, we're really getting where we want to be. We are hoping to see some long-term positive effects and outcomes. We're looking for the children to be able to do some more self-regulation, to reduce their stress, and really just to be able to better process their emotions. So, so far, it's been good. And if you're ever free in the morning, 8:40, come visit us and you can participate too. Are there any questions?
No, I just think it's, I think it's great using my voice. I did this, I think, 20 years ago with sixth graders. And just like you said, recess, time to calm them down. And that was their time to either just sit still and read or just free journal writing and kind of change the focus of the day, or at least afternoon after recess.
Yeah.
And I just think it's great that you're doing that with these kids.
Yeah, it's, it's been really fun so far, so.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just a comment. I love it. I'm a little familiar with, with the research behind this. This isn't something that I dabble in a lot, but I do think it's very worthwhile. And it's definitely consistent, you know, with the district's goal and mission of educating the whole child. I really love the way that this is true differentiation in trying to impact our kids in different kinds of ways and still kind of increase their learning. So kudos to you. I think this is awesome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're very happy with it, so. Thank you so much. That's, that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. Well, we'll introduce Mr. Holland and Ms. Huggins and Ms. Walker and Mrs. Davis will come on up. And we're going to celebrate some of our Dodge Tigers.
So good, good evening, everyone. I just want to take a second just to thank all of our schools today because what Dodge did was we brought our last month's Student of the Month to this meeting too. So I know that we have a large crowd of Student of the Month kids and a lot of kids to be recognized. And truth of the matter is, I just wanted them to be on TV. So we wanted to put them all in this group together. But because of it, what I saw as we brought in our Student of the Month made me as a staff member, but also as a community member, is just extremely proud. Families were giving up seats for little ones, sharing seats, moving together, working together. I saw high school kids give up seats to make sure families could sit together. It's just a really extremely proud moment as a, again, as a staff member and as a community member. It's why I came to live here and it's why I came to work here. So as we honor our Students of the Month and our Staff of the Month and some other pieces, I do want to just make sure that we make an extra special thank you to our PTA as well. Our PTA has done some fabulous things for us this school year. And the shameless plug is our Father Daughter Dance is coming up very soon. But they've done some fabulous things for us this year. And after we honor some of our students and some of our staff, we'll take a minute to show you some of the work that they've done with us this year. So again, let's thank you very much. And I'm going to pass this on to Mrs. Walker.
Good evening, everyone. George G. Dodge Intermediate School has recently elected the 2017-2018 Student Council members. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing the four officers. These officers are going to take a leadership role tonight. And they are going to announce our September and October Students of the Month. So if I can please have our four officers, Destiny Jackson, Lexi McIlroy, Josie Davis, and Savannah Hamid, come up front, please.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening. My name is Destiny Jackson and I am the sixth grade Student Council President. Character counts at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. The following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, outstanding academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments.
Good evening. My name is Lexi McIlroy. I'm Dodge's treasure. The character word for fourth grade students this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule, are tolerant of differences, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of the feelings of others, do not threaten, hit, or hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, insults, and disagreements. We are proud to announce our fourth grade Students of the Month from Ms. Reeck, Ms. Karilic, and Ms. Williams classes. Spencer Beck. Dana Little. Xavier Williams. And from Ms. McHugh, Ms. Latch, and Ms. Custich classes, Rajay Anell. Logan Petrus. And Marina Kleckem.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Savannah Hamid and I am the Dodge Vice President. The character word for fifth grade students this quarter is caring. Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one, that one expresses gratitude, forgives, forgives others and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. Fifth grade students of the month from Ms. Henryd, Ms. Schmeiderman, and Ms. Ruckers class are showed caring, who showed caring behaviors were Elizabeth Goldneck. Evan Schmee, Schmee Man. Landon Withers, Withers. And from Ms. Bush and Mr. Schultz class, Hanaski Abenag, Abenaghi, and Justin Smith.
Good evening. My name is Josie Davis and I am Dodge Intermediate Student Council Secretary. The character word for sixth grade students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means you do your share to make your school and community better. You cooperate, you get involved in community affairs, you stay informed, vote. You're a good neighbor, you obey laws and rules, you respect authority, you protect the environment, and you volunteer in your school, community, and community at large. The following sixth grade students from Mr. Pulaski and Mrs. Stoffer's classes demonstrate excellent citizenship. Maya Kalika. And Joe Sait, Joseph Saitz. And from Ms. Korea's, Mrs. Etcher, and Ms. Coleman Taylor classes, Xavier Byrd. Ethan Doyle. And Sineah Ruffin. Sineah.
I would like to provide you with an update on many projects and incentives that we, that we are working on at Student Council at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Spirit Week, Red Webbing Week, a pumpkin decorating contest, and supporting the district's filibus. We look forward to a great year.
Okay, students, if you can look at the audience with a nice, big smiles. Mr. Holland, we may want this first row to step down on the floor. Thank you. Kate, your certificate's in front of you. Scoot up here for me. There you go. And... Thank you, students. Excellent job.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mrs. Huggins. I'm the other, I'm, I'm Mr. Holland. Before we go on, I just want to have our staff at Dodge stand. These are our, our teachers who work with these great students each and every day. Thank you so much, staff. We appreciate your help. We appreciate your support. We know without you and our families, we couldn't do it. So thank you. Now, with that in mind, each month, the Dodge teachers and staff take it upon themselves to look at their own and look at the people that they work with and they're friends with and they eat with every single day. And they nominate someone that they think are the top Tiger for that month. And today, we're recognizing two individuals. One is here with us tonight. One was unable to make it, but I still want to read their summary. The first is Mrs. Vilcek. So Mrs. Vilcek, can you please come up? Mrs. Vilcek was nominated by Ms. Jen McHugh. And Mrs. Vilcek was nominated because she had created a great ecosystem observation. That was an outside program for all of her staff members and all of her team members to use. And as we know, one way that we involve students in science is to actually get them involved. They appreciated her professionalism. We always do. But one of the things Mrs. Vilcek is especially, especially dealing with this year is the loss of a voice. And this lady has come to work every single day because she did not want to miss being with her students. And I appreciate that work ethic and that determination and trying to be here to do a best for our team. Great job. Mrs. Abby Etcher is our second person. She could not find a babysitter tonight for her little one. So she's at home and thinking about us. But Mrs. Etcher was nominated again by Mrs. McHugh. And she created a Google document to help us track when our buses come each day. Now, parents, you know how important it is for our students to get on their buses on time so that they're to you on time. So we don't want any bus misses. We want it smooth. And because of her work, we're able to use this Google system so that we know what buses are there, we know what buses are leaving. The students are involved and everyone is seeing this at the same time throughout the building using that Google platform. So we thank her for that and her team members thank her for that hard work as well. So thank you so much.
So we're almost done, I promise. Before we left, I wanted to say again, we really depend on our PTA. And so one of the initiatives that we strongly depended on our PTA for was an initiative called Chalk the Walk. So if I could draw your attention to our overhead projector there. What we did was, you, there was a lot of controversy across the state of Ohio, actually, regarding the eclipse time. And so we wanted to make sure we had safety plans in place for our kids as they exited the building for, during that peak time of the day. And so what I did was I reached out to our PTA on a Sunday, by the way. And I called both our, our district PTA and our building PTA and shared an idea that came to me through our superintendent. And they jumped on board. We got letters out to families, we've got emails out, and there was Blackboard connects. And they did everything possible to make sure this was a success. And what they did was they decorated our sidewalks. And so for anybody who's ever been at Dodge, you know that there's a lot of sidewalk space at Dodge. And so to have our parents come out, bring their high schoolers or their college-age kids that were home to help us. And they decorated every inch of that sidewalk, from the greenhouse all the way down the bus line, wrapping around to the front of the building. And so what kids had the opportunity to do during that peak dismissal time, rather than be tempted to look up at the eclipse, they looked down at the sidewalks. And so we are really, really grateful to our central office, number one, for coming up with the idea, our district and our Dodge PTAs, our, our staff who came out and joined and helped decorate it. And most of all, the families that came to attend to help us decorate. People brought their own chalk and their own radios. It was just a really exciting time to come out. And so what we wanted to do is to honor the families, the parents that came out to help us support that initiative. So without further ado, we want to celebrate Danielle Bucknow. We also had Lisa Dobber. Renee Eckenroad. Tricia Grant. Melanie Harwood. Jennifer Honaker. Michelle Hop. Joanne Shouse. Jennifer Sudnick. Stephen Sudnick. Erin Sweeney. Kumuda Rickensine. And Stephanie Wolfert. So clearly, they are out decorating sidewalks for us. We did move them from the last board meeting to this one also. So I know that there was some scheduling pieces for them. But if you see them or if they're, get a chance to see this, we extremely appreciate the support of our students and our staff. And it was just a phenomenal activity. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Holland and Mrs. Huggins and Ms. Walker for always presenting such wonderful, fantastic students from George G. Dodge Intermediate School.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to take a short break to allow the families and the students of Wilcox and George G. Dodge to transition out of the chamber. And then we're going to, we have staff and students from the high school that will transition into the chamber so that they can be seated. So I appreciate the public's patience while we move through this portion of the agenda. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, we're going to commence with the high school. If it's possible, we could have doors closed to the chamber. If there are parents of high school students, please make your way in. We would like to begin with the high school portion of student recognition and building highlights.
At this time, I'd like to start to honor our National Merit semifinalists. This is one of the highest honors we give at the high school. And the reason why we celebrate this type of award, it's because it's a national award, but also, it's related to how the students do on the PSAT from last year. We are lucky, but also excited to announce that this year, we have six National Merit semifinalists in the halls of Twinsburg High School and, of course, in the classrooms of Twinsburg High School. Tonight, we celebrate with their parents, and we'd like to bring the six up individually. We also then have four commended scholars, and I'll explain what the difference is. To become a National Merit semifinalist, of the 1.6 million students that took the PSAT last year, the top 16,000 scores make it into this book. And so, our six students will be recognized tonight. If we're going to start, Mr. Popovich?
Okay, we will begin with Jared Bray. Next, we have Justin Clement. Nifia Kasabatla. Nathan Moliano. Jeremy Ninnick. And Danielle Pittler.
Okay, so we have a little tradition here for the high school. So, Danielle, tell us who you brought tonight to celebrate.
I brought my parents and my grandparents.
Okay. How about you?
Both my parents, my younger brother and my younger sister.
Thank you.
Both my mom and my dad.
Congratulations.
My dad.
Mother and father, right there.
I brought my mom and dad and my little brother, Jane.
He's fist pumped. Okay, so that's what it looks like to have in Ohio, the top score or the range was 219 on the PSAT. Every year, it varies. So, this is our group this year. We haven't had six semifinalists since 2006. So, this is a very nice group, and I'm super proud of them. Thank you. Next group, we call them commended scholars. The commended scholars, a little different. Of the 50,000 top students, 16,000 would qualify for National Merit semifinalists. 34,000 could be named commended scholars. We have four this year. And again, another record. So, I'd like to call the four.
And we'll begin with McKenna Baco. Zachary Dobsky. I don't think he's here tonight, but Somiel Jane. And Ariyan Singh.
All right, Ariyan, I'm going to start with you. All right, tell us who you brought tonight to celebrate.
I brought my, I brought my mom and my dad.
He has a great camera right here.
I brought my dad.
McKenna?
My mom and my dad.
Thanks for coming. Okay. Oh, yeah, Somiel.
And this is it.
This is our 10, well, 10 total, would have been 10 total. And then, Ms., yes, please, he has a great camera, and we'd like a photo op of all of our students here. So, top 50,000 scores nationally of 1.6 million students. So, congratulations. Our building highlight tonight, as you know, we have many students that participate in our Cleveland Clinic Expressions Contest. The part we don't usually have is students that do internships for the medical portion of the Expressions Contest. Sometimes, we hear about the art, but we don't see the medical part. We'd like to introduce tonight Dana Concarly. Dana, come on out. Okay. Dana, you're going to tell us a little bit about your internship this past summer and what you did, and also, where you got your inspiration for this particular internship. Okay? So, I'll hold your poster.
So, I did the Cleveland Clinic Summer Science Internship Program, and my program track was nursing care. And the department I was in was the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. And I spent nine weeks at Hillcrest Hospital's Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, also known as the NICU. And I worked on a research project, and my research project was the impact of infant-driven feeding in the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. So, infant-driven feeding is feeding the baby when it wants to be fed rather than feeding it on a timed schedule, which is traditionally how babies are fed. And if you feed the baby when it wants to be fed, when it gives like its cues, like rooting or when it's crying, it'll help the baby mature more and it'll be out of the NICU faster. So, my typical day started at seven in the morning and ended around three o'clock, five days a week. And there, I would do research and/or I'll see surgeries. And one of the surgeries was the most amazing experience of my life, was seeing an open-heart surgery by Dr. Mark Botham at Hillcrest Hospital. And it was the most intense, long, tiring, but greatest eight hours of my life. Just seeing like all of that, and I'm just like, wow. And honestly, it was the greatest thing. It's currently in the process of being published and hopefully sent to the National Nursing Conference.
And we do, as high school that participated in this internship, we do receive a book with Dana featured in it as well as her study. And this will be posted in our school. So, congratulations, Dana, for that selection. Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, I can only say how very proud I am of every one of these outstanding students presented this evening. And to our high school parents, you know, your student doesn't become this fantastic scholar without the support of the family at home. So, thank you so very much for your dedication to your child and your partnership with our school district. It certainly does make a difference. And congratulations. We wish your children to have a very wonderful school year and much success. Mr. Curtis, that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay. So, this is the normal time in which I would excuse anyone else in the chamber for purposes of a Student of the Month or Building Highlights. At this time, any individuals in the lobby who would wish to enter the chamber, you can now do so. So, we'll take a couple of minutes to allow for that to happen. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Okay. Again, I want to reiterate my sincere appreciation for your patience in allowing our parents and students to transition out while you were waiting in the lobby. We're going to move on to committee reports, which is next on the agenda. Do we have any committee reports?
Yes, I'll try to think this briefly because I know everybody's been very patient. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on October 9th, just last Monday, and group of parents, teachers, administrators, it's just always a really good committee to be involved with and see what's going on educationally with our students here. I'll just touch briefly on some of the things that we discussed at the meeting. One thing that was brought up was district curriculum updates. There was talk about the summer reading camp that occurred with 100 students participating, and it was a small group, six to eight per class, and that was a success for our students. Discussion of the kindergarten readiness assessment, and this is our fourth year in implementation of it. The COGAP, this is first year online for grades two through five. There was also discussion of Chromebook Initiative, and it's going to be rolling out to students, as you've heard, after winter break. And this has already come and gone, but at that time, it was just a few days before the National Assessment Day, and we talked about the sophomores that were going to take the pre-ACT and juniors taking the PSAT, and the freshmen had a chance to hear more about colleges in the area, and they had a chance to learn about things like that. There's a new program that they're introducing called Foundations for Preschool Level, and it's multi-sensory, research-based. And right now, currently, it says that there are 76 students enrolled in our preschool, and they'll be learning about foundations. There is also Ready Test A through Z, and it's an extension of the RAS kits, which is for the primary grades. And then, there was discussion about the updated Ohio Learning Standards for ELA and Math, and 2010 was the last revision that we've had. Ohio State's test for the share going to be based on previous standards, but the testing for the 2018 and 19 will be based on the revised standards coming up. There was talk about the continuous improvement plans for each building, too. They present, the administrators and teachers, they've presented what the plans were for continuous improvement throughout the buildings, and the schools were focusing on common areas such as reading, math, and PBIS. And then, another interesting last, yeah, I think, is there's the adoption of the Zones of Regulation, a new program for the schools, and it's research-based, social and emotional program. Teaching kids how to regulate their emotions and problem-solving behavioral management to deal with issues that come up throughout the day at home, at school, et cetera. And there's a parent component involved in this, and there's going to be professional development forthcoming for this. And our schools received a $3,000 grant in partnership with Beach Brook to help and assist with this. So, that said quickly in a nutshell, unless you have something to add.
No, just that the preschool reading program, it's a good thing that the program that they're using is called Wilson Reading. And if you know anything about reading programs, Wilson Reading is a very well-known, research-based program. I think it's going to be very useful, especially for early childhood purposes. As we know, reading foundation is really the foundation for a lot of the other disciplines, and especially with respect to having to pass the third-grade reading guarantee, the earlier that we're able to get this kind of intervention to our students, excuse me, the better. So, I was really pleased to see that we had enlisted to use that program. But otherwise, I think you covered everything, Ms. Davis. Any other announcements for curriculum or, sorry, committee meetings?
Finance Committee has a meeting on the 23rd of October at 4:30 at the board offices.
Okay. Okay. So, next on the agenda is remonstrance. As a reminder, the purpose of the regular board, the regular meetings of the Board of Education is to conduct business. Because the Board of Education represents the school district, which is a public organization, these business meetings are required to be conducted in public. These regular business meetings are different from community forums or other special meetings, which are conducted with the specific intent to engage with and encourage interactive discussion with the community. To accommodate the public participation as part of the regular business meeting, an agenda item called remonstrance is included. Conduct for remonstrance is provided for within the board bylaws, specifically Section 0169.1. Persons wishing to speak during remonstrance are asked to provide their name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Comments should be limited to five minutes. Total time for public participation is limited to 30 minutes. While statements regarding matters of general district policy or procedures are appropriate, statements should not be personally directed nor abusive, nor should statements be made regarding specific disciplinary matters involving students or staff. To address concerns regarding student disciplinary matters or staff performance, the Board of Education requests that you submit such concerns in writing to the superintendent. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education may do so at this time, and I do have blue cards completed, and I will call- I believe that Brian is the best person for this position, and I ask the board, please consider this in moving forward. I also have a letter from a Mr. John Gudinski that I was asked to read. His address is 9379 Hyde Park Drive. The letter states, "I cannot be present at this meeting and have given my permission to have this read into the public record. I have held a coaching position in this district since 1976. I have been under the direction of eight superintendents, nine principals, and 10 athletic directors. When I first got here, the AD got one release period from his teaching schedule to administer the department that was in debt so far that he could not get a 90-day line of credit to refurbish our football equipment. Our girls' teams use the same uniforms for all three teams that we had at the time. The superintendent paid out of his pocket for the purchase of baseballs at the start of the season. I mention this because I am very proud of how far our district has come and the hard work and dedication put forth by coaches, administrators, and more importantly, this community to make it a place of one destination, not avoidance. I am mostly troubled by the situation concerning Brian Fantone. What greater tribute to a community than to find one of its own wanting to stay and devote his personal as well as professional life to the town in which he was raised? I have 20 years' experience with Brian. I was his teacher. As a college student, he volunteered to help me coach the ninth-grade basketball team. When I retired, he took my position and did a great job, and I became his assistant. When he became head coach at Woodbridge, where he won a conference championship for the first time in 17 years. He returned here because his town needed and wanted his talent back. He was elevated to the district's athletic director and has done nothing more than devote his time to our students, coaches, boosters, and community. I have sat with Brian and his family in the end zone of the football field to share a meal, as this was the only time he would see his family that day. I see no reason for him to be removed from the position as he has remained a positive influence with our students, kept up the morale of athletic staff through the ups and downs of a season, and trying to present our teams in the utmost positive light as possible. He has to withstand immense pressure while presenting this board's policy of anonymous evaluation of coaches and the duty of ensuring the collection of a paid participate fee that has done very little to offset expenses, but has eliminated student involvement. I strongly suggest that you, as a board, think of what positive action this will bring. I know this, our district needs all the positive elements it can have. I believe you want this to be a place of destination, not avoidance. By eliminating a man, eliminating a man to whom you just gave a new three-year contract with no apparent public reason, you have certainly bordered our district with signs that say, "Avoid at all costs." And that's Mr. Gudinski's letter. I thank you for your time. I would like to make one last note. I do wish, as a most lifelong, almost lifelong resident, that with the obvious large crowd, that this probably should have been held somewhere else, this meeting. But I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Dan Savitt.
My address is 3087 Abrams Drive. And I thank you for this time. So I'd like to talk about the same issue that we just heard about. And I just wanted to remind the board of your responsibilities. I'm sure you don't need reminding, but I'm going to do it anyway. One is protect the rights of the staff. It's very important. I don't see that happening here. Oversight of the superintendent, this is important. It's what the board is for. The board is to oversee the policies, to oversee the staff, including the superintendent, represent the community and what we wish and what we'd like to see happen. And what might not be obvious is your responsibility as a board to ensure you reduce or eliminate the legal and financial risk. And in this case, we've definitely, you've definitely introduced some of that. Frankly, all these, in this case, these responsibilities, it feels like a failure. And I think the evidence is based on all the people that we have here and all the letters that we've seen float through social media. And then I have to take a look and ask why. Why is, why are we here? Why did this happen? Where are we going? You know, as we look at how we treat staff and how we treat employees, I've been managing and directing and leading people for 20 years. It is a failure of a manager to walk somebody out for a technicality. I've never seen it before without introducing significant legal risk. What I would ask is that you deal with the facts of this case, that you consider the person and the family. We talk about Brian and where this is headed. You consider the wishes of the community, which are represented here. And finally, I'd like to say, look at, when it comes to how we, how we deal with personnel issues, no one should be released on a technicality. That, that makes no sense. We should always use morality and common sense as it relates to using policy. So again, I thank you for this time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have David Kleiman.
David Kleiman, 3005 Abrams Drive. Also here to talk about Brian Fantone and hopefully his reinstatement as the athletic director. Wish I could be as eloquent as Mr. Gudinski, but I'll give it a shot. Girls' athletics, boys' athletics, orchestra and band concerts, show choir, fundraisers, these are just some of the events that I've seen Mr. Fantone at. Students like him and respect him. Parents like him. Teachers like him. Other athletic directors like him and respect him. Isn't this the kind of person that our community wants in a leadership role? And I would say to our superintendent, I'd like to give you a quote from Steve Jobs. "It doesn't make sense to hire smart people and then tell them what to do. We hire smart people so they can tell us what to do." And for the board, I'd like to leave you with a quote from Mark Twain. "Do the right thing, it will gratify some people and astonish the rest. Please do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any more blue cards, so that concludes remonstrance for this evening. We will move on to Item G of the business meeting, which is the Treasurer's Report and Recommendations. G1, "Resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of October 4th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover." Do I have a motion for G1? So moved. So moved by Mr. Felver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Discussion. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felver?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Items H1, 2, and 3, and per the request of Mrs. Turl Waldron earlier, we will separate them. Excuse me, I will read items H1, 2, and 3 individually. Items H1, "Resolved that the Twinsburg City School Board accepts the certificated licensed personnel indoor contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check." Do I have a motion to accept Items H1?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felver?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Items H1, 2, and 3, and per the request of Mrs. Turl Waldron earlier, we will separate them. Excuse me, I will read items H1, 2, and 3 individually. Items H1, "Resolved that the Twinsburg City School Board accepts the certified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks." Do I have a motion for H2?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felver. Discussion.
Yes, in relationship to the leave of absence portion, specifically Mr. Brian Fantone, do you know state it's administrative paid leave, assignment to home, period undefined. Mr. Curtis, can you please tell me what a yes vote would mean, what the result would be? For the...
Acknowledging the procedure, if I'm not mistaken. Yes.
Okay. I ask Mr. Curtis. Mr. Curtis, did you put this on the agenda? Who created, who put this particular item on the agenda? From my understanding, the board president in conjunction with the superintendent puts it on. Am I accurate?
That's normal process. The superintendent prepares the board agenda as with every board meeting that has ever been conducted.
Okay, so with that, can you please tell me what a yes vote will mean?
If you understand what you're reading, then you should understand what a yes vote means.
I'm not understanding, so I'm asking you as president, administrative paid leave, does this mean we are moving him to home assignment? So does a yes, what does a yes vote and what does a no vote mean?
Madam Superintendent, would you please provide clarification?
Certainly, Mr. Curtis. So the motion here, the resolution, would provide Mr. Fantone be placed on administrative leave, period undefined, per the process that we have in play.
Which is the due process that we're currently involved in right now.
Right. So a no vote would mean that he would remain?
A no vote, Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yeah, if this, if we, if this board were to make a no vote, what would that mean for Mr. Fantone?
Well, it would depend on what the majority is, and then we would be in executive session to discuss that.
If the majority were to vote no, what does that mean for Mr. Fantone?
This coincides with the conversation in executive session, and so I would wish that we...
Can you just tell me what it means for Mr. Fantone? Will he be back in, will he be back employed or will he be at home? Because I don't understand this verbiage here. So I need clarification.
Mr. Curtis, if I would then ask you to pull this and we can go in executive session and discuss this with Mrs. Waldron at that time.
No, I would like to do this in public, please. No. I am asking...
Mr. Curtis, maybe I can shed a little bit of light because we've had, this is nearing four years that I've been in this procedure, where every business meeting, we have certificated...
With all due respect, Mr. Felver, I have the floor. My question has not been answered. My question has not been answered.
Excuse me. Mr. Felver had the floor.
I have the floor. I would like to know whether Mr. Fantone, if this board votes no, will be back in his position at Twinsburg High School. It is either a yes or a no. I need to understand, when I vote, if it is a yes, if he's going to be home, or if it's a no, that he will be back, back in his position. I need to have clarification before I can move forward with voting.
Consistent with parliamentary procedure, it is contingent upon what the majority of the board votes. Mr. Felver, would you, are you interested in providing any further commentary? Okay. Mr. Curtis, thank you for acknowledging that I have the floor. We are in the discussion portion of a motion. That means it's been, motion's been made, it's been second, now we have discussion amongst the board. I'm going to add what I believe is the procedure to maybe clarify the way I understand this, this particular procedure with regards to what we've done for the last four years. In every business meeting, we have classified, certificated, and supplemental contracts that have been recommended during that two-week period. And not only to Mr. Fantone, but all the other names that are, that are under H2 are affected by this. What we are acknowledging, if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, and the superintendent can correct me, that we are acknowledging the procedures that have been set forth by how these names come to us. If someone's up for supplemental contract and we've approved that contract, that's the financial obligation. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, do the procedures that we're following by employment law, that because of the actions that the administration's taking, we're acknowledging that this is on the agenda with respect to, this has happened, it's in the procedure, whether it was a resignation, someone's taken a leave of absence, a sick leave, and if you look through the agenda, all those kinds of things. And it's all we're doing is acknowledging these. This is not a motion on a termination that has nothing to do with that, unless I'm wrong. And I know we have legal counsel probably here that can probably answer this question. We've been voting on things like this every two weeks, in my experience, for the last four years. So for, for someone to, and not ask what we're voting on, when they've each voted 26 times over each year, to not understand what they're voting on. Now, this is a procedure. It has nothing to do with a very specific item of termination. This is just acknowledging that this action's being taken, and we're putting in public record that this individual was placed on administrative leave, as if they took a sick leave, if they were resignation, or if they were getting a supplemental contract. That's why we have it as certificated, classified, and supplemental contracts. Has anything I said been incorrect to either my board members or superintendent, business manager? These are the procedures that we followed for the last four years. And boards before us, every two weeks, these are the same motions that come up. These are the things that have happened over the last two weeks. And we're just acknowledging this in the agenda. That's, a yes vote means we're accepting all these. Sometimes they get pulled because there's a typo, or somebody didn't resign, or there's some other issue, and they're taken off the agenda. But these things are put on automatically at the, at every agenda, every two weeks, the activity that's happened over the last two weeks. Am I, is there anything I've said that's incorrect, or a board member says, "I'm not seeing this correctly"? Because I have to vote on this as well, along with my four other colleagues.
I am still not clear as to what the result will be if, so I will restate my question. If five board members vote yes to this, will Mr. Fantone be, from my understanding, he will be paid leave, assignment, home, for a period undefined? If five members vote no, this is what I need clarification on. Would this mean Mr. Fantone will return to his position at Twinsburg High School and still, you know, still move forward with whatever process was currently being done? But I need to understand what, what Brian Fantone, with a yes or a no vote, what the result or the outcome will be. Because I, so if someone can clarify that for me, I would appreciate it.
I can take another attempt at it.
I'm a little confused here, okay?
It's all mine.
Because, you know, Mrs. Turl Waldron, you're fully aware of an ongoing investigation and a procedure that the board has enacted, you know, to, to, to give due process, as Mr. Curtis so spoke in his president's report. This item here says that we have placed an administrator on paid leave during this investigation, during the procedure that is going. And a yes vote here continues that because, as you're fully well-aware of, that process has not been finally completed. You're aware of that? We have all, we are all aware of that. This is not about a termination. This is not about a reassignment. This is strictly stating and acknowledging the fact that an administrative...
If five board members vote yes to this, will Mr. Fantone be, from my understanding, he will be paid leave, assignment, home, for a period undefined? If five members vote no, this is what I need clarification on. Would this mean Mr. Fantone will return to his position at Twinsburg High School, and still, you know, still move forward with whatever process was currently being done? But I need to understand what, what Brian Fantone, with a yes or a no vote, what the result or the outcome will be. Because I, so if someone can clarify that for me, I would appreciate it.
I can take another attempt at it.
I'm a little confused here, okay? Because, you know, Mrs. Turl Waldron, you're fully aware of an ongoing investigation, and a procedure that the board has enacted, you know, to, to, to give due process, as Mr. Curtis so spoke in his president's report. This item here says that we have placed an administrator on paid leave during this investigation, during the procedure that is going, and a yes vote here continues that, because as you're fully well aware of, that process has not been finally completed. You're aware of that, we have all, we are all aware of that. This is not about a termination, this is not about a reassignment, this is strictly stating and acknowledging the fact that an employee is on paid administrative leave during the course of this process.
Okay, what is...
The process is not complete, we are all full aware of that, and for you to think that, that, that you, that you're not, is absurd to me. You know, and, and so, this, this question that you're asking here, in terms of what a no vote means, a, a, a no vote then would say that he is not on administrative leave, then we would have to probably enter into an executive session and figure out another action to take, and then come back out.
And, and again, I want to, you know, make a point of clarification, which my, you know, board colleagues have already acknowledged, and, and so I did address this in my president's report. Due process is just that, it is a process, there are things that, that we're bound by to follow and do, and actions that we must take, and this is one procedure that is within the due process guidelines that we are bound to by statute. So, again, I will reiterate what my board colleagues have said. This is not a termination, this is consistent with what our responsibility is with respect to affording an employee due process.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, if this is our due process, can you please state which policy defines administrative paid leave, assignment to home, period undefined, for, while an employee's under investigation? I was not able to find that policy. Can you please state what policy that is?
The policy is sunshine policy with respect to information that we are not allowed to share in a public way, and due process is consistent with the information that, that we have, and this investigation, again, we are in the midst of an investigation, so I can't, I can't say it any more clear, I can't reiterate it any more clearly.
So my question...
This is part of, this is part of the due process, which you, which you're, which you're well aware of.
Okay, do we place everyone on administrative leave while under investigation?
Mr. Curtis, may I?
And secondly, what is past practice?
I can't, I can't.
These are questions that need to be answered, these are questions...
We can't publicly discuss this, and you know this.
We can't publicly discuss, what do we place everyone on administrative leave while under investigation, Mr. Curtis? And what is past practice?
You've been on it more longer than I have, you should be able to answer that question.
Okay, well, you're the president, I'm asking you.
You've been here for four years too, and you've placed people on administrative leave, you've also terminated people without administrative leave, you've been here through all...
So we have, and in past practice...
You've voted yes on, on four years of this. Why, why all of a sudden...
In past practice, have we put, and you want...
We, including yourself?
While anybody under investigation on administrative leave? I believe the answer, from my understanding and from my experience, is no.
I think that is one of the procedures that is available to us, whether you have someone that is placed in administrative leave at home, whether they are placed in administrative leave, and they, they have access to the school, there's all different policies, and for those that don't know, and I don't know every policy number of the 9,000 that are on our website, but I do know that under executive privilege, we are bound by this policy not to discuss. And there's people that are sitting up here that have been in those executive sessions and are not allowed to talk, and we took an oath not to do that. So to ask questions about things that were discussed in executive session...
I'm not asking for discussion.
And, excuse me, I have the floor. And to make it sound like you're smearing and throwing things around, and throwing jargon out, when these are procedures that I've sat next to you, that you've voted on for the last four years, when every single meeting, every two weeks, we have these same votes, and it's all we're doing is acknowledging that these are the things that had happened over the last two weeks. There's an ongoing investigation, this is not a termination resolution, that is not what is before you. It's all we're saying, and if you look at the agendas, all those names, all those people, supplemental, sick leaves, that's the procedures. We're putting in public record what has happened over the last two weeks. And I know it seems like a very emotional issue, nobody is trying to, to say something, you know, that's not in the public. This is a public meeting, and for someone to sit here and try to throw innuendos out that we're doing anything other than we've done, at least those of us that have been here for four years, the three of us, my colleague to my right, and Ms. Davis to my right as well, we've been here nearly four years, and the colleagues before us, every two weeks have these same procedures. A lot of the things, meeting minutes, that have come up, every single, those are procedures that we've all voted on, and if we want to pull voting records over four years, I'm sure you voted on these very same procedures, things that we've discussed in executive session, that we hope doesn't leave executive session, that have come up here into the public agenda and are voted on. So to make something sound like it's all of a sudden very different than what we've done for, at least for me, for the last four years, on every kind of vote, why is it any different now? To ask what it means brings question in my mind, what have you been voting on for the last four years? That's my opinion.
All right, and may I speak? Okay, and may I speak without an interruption, just that courtesy, please? Um, I know this is a very emotionally charged topic, and I'm sorry if you don't feel that way, but it is. And, excuse me, excuse me.
I'm going to make a motion, if we're going to discuss publicly, what we know cannot be discussed publicly, that we will, that we need to go into an executive session.
I just want clarification. Um, and we know that we can't discuss the details, and if anybody has, that's very unfortunate. There's lots of rumors that have been flying around, lots of assumptions, and it's, that's unfair to Mr. Fantone as well. And if, if I'm seeing clarification on this, to seek clarification on this, because it can be very confusing, I'm assuming what we're voting on too, one of the things we're voting on with this is that Mr. Fantone gets paid leave while he is provided a fair process, and so that there aren't any hasty, quick, rash decisions made. So, from what I understand, we're seeking paid leave as, as opposed to unpaid leave for Mr. Fantone, while there is a fair process before, like I said before, any hasty decisions are made.
Okay, at this time, I make a motion that Brian Fantone return to his full duties effective immediately. Would any of my colleagues like to second?
I'm going to make a note of parliamentary procedure, we have an open motion, for a motion to be amended, the person has to request that the person who made the motion accept an amendment to the motion, that then motion needs to be voted on, whether that amendment is accepted to the original motion, and then we go on with the original vote. That is the parliamentary procedure that this board follows.
Then I make a motion that we make an amendment to the motion, let me just make sure I get this correct. I make an amendment to the motion that Brian Fantone return to his full duties effective immediately.
Mr. President, you have a motion on the floor, it needs to be seconded, to be even discussed, as an amendment.
Do we have a, do we have a second?
I want to know, um...
We need a second before we can have discussion. Before we can discuss a motion, we have to have it by parliamentary procedure.
Okay, so...
It's been made, there has to be a second to, at least the amendment, to discuss the amendment.
Okay, so at least to consider this, yes or no vote?
We cannot have a discussion without a second. Is anyone going to second this?
I'll second it for discussion, and we'll see. But I want to make sure that we're doing everything fair for both sides, and that, I want to make sure that Mr. Fantone and all involved get the fair process, so that he, there's a lot that can be affected by this.
Yes, I agree, this, and I'm, you know, going to reiterate what I've already said, you know, due process, as for purposes of protecting the board employee, their due process, as well as their privacy. And again, we strictly follow these guidelines for purposes of making sure that all of the information, all, any and all pertinent information is looked at and reviewed prior to making any kind of decision or taking any board action. That hasn't changed.
And I am not asking that we discontinue, as you said, an investigation, I am asking while we do the investigation, that we allow Mr. Fantone to come back to Twinsburg High School with our students, with his, his staff, for our homecoming, and do what he does best, and work with these children and, and his coaches.
So we have an amendment on the floor, and what I understand is the amendment is asking us to break from legal procedure without the, the input of legal counsel, not understanding the amendment as it relates to the process that's been laid out in here, and we break from legal procedure, open the district up to additional liability, that we don't even know what this amendment does to a motion, to change procedures midstream, when there's a legal proceeding by both Ohio law and employment law, and that's what you want to do.
With all due respect, there was a motion put on the table, it was seconded by Ms. Davis, please let's vote.
We are, why are we voting when I'm, we're still discussing?
Oh, we'll continue.
The procedure is, I'm asking a question. You want to break from typical procedure that was laid out by our bylaws, as well as our legal counsel, on how to make due process for Mr. Fantone, and a, and a fair process, and an open investigation, and just stop midstream without any additional evidence, without any additional input to the procedure, and just stop the procedure?
I am not asking you to stop the investigation.
I don't, I don't know the legal implications of stopping and doing a change in what we were authorized and told is the legal way to proceed in these situations, and then just break from that, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I'll tell you, my vote on the amendments, no, because I don't understand what the legal ramifications of this change midstream in a process, emotional as it may be, we are charged with following a certain procedure, we're following the procedure, and again, as the president indicated, due process. To change from something and not understand what the legal implications of due process, this could harm the individual, this could harm the district, we don't know what this little change that you think is emotional is not. This is not about termination or not termination, this is about acknowledging the activities of the district over the last two weeks. Anybody that has the agenda can read it and see what's in there. This is not a termination hearing, this is not a termination resolution, this is acknowledging activities, basic, kind of the, the district minutes of what happened in the last two weeks, that's all we're acknowledging. And to turn it into something else, I think, is, in my opinion, grandstanding for other purposes, but that's, again, my personal opinion. It's on tape, I said it, that is my opinion of why certain things are being brought up, and the way that they're being brought up, when they're asking us to, to change legal procedure and open ourselves up to liability that we're not aware of by changing a procedure midstream. A procedure that this board agreed on and is following the procedure laid out in the bylaws that were established by boards way before us. So, you know, if there's additional discussion, that's where we're at, we're on discussion about the amendment.
I concur. Any other discussion?
Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
So we are, so I'm clear, we are voting on the amended to return Mr. Fantone back to his position.
As the amendment...
Correct.
Yeah, if you want to read the amendment as it reads, the amendment that you're asking the original motion maker to read, we're, we're voting, you're voting on amending the other motion that is still open on the floor. So you understand parliamentally what you're asking?
I am asking to amend, yes.
So we, we vote on the amendment, and then we can either return to the other motion, or that motion changes depending on this vote?
Correct.
And as far as the amendment, I, I do have concern, whichever way anybody votes, I do have concern that there is a fair process though. And...
Correct.
I don't think everybody up here, because there's been a change, I don't know if everybody up here understands that, whether you're, well, for Mr. Fantone, this could, I, I, I think this could harm his process. That's my concern, is the legal ramifications, because I don't think everybody understands, I mean, in the way I looked at this leave of absence...
I believe discussion's over, we're voting. Discussion is over.
It's not over because you say it's over. You are famous for interrupting.
Please.
I am trying...
I thought we were voting.
Please, please.
Excuse me. What, and as, like I said, as I saw this agenda item, and from what I understand, it is so that he can have paid leave while we have a process going on, so that we're not sending him home during this process unpaid, unfinanced, and that he is going to get paid while there is a fair process for him. And I, I'm just concerned that there are, there's unclear legal ramifications that he, that may actually harm the case for him, and I, and I, I, like I said, I see this as voting yes for the paid leave. And not, this is not a vote for termination, this is not a vote...
It is not.
For saying that he, whether he belongs in the schools or not in the school, this is a, so that he may get paid while he's having a fair process. And I, and this has been emotional for everybody, and this is something that needs to be done the right way, so that there is, you know, justice for this case. And, and I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we do divert from this, that it, it could be, I'm not saying detrimental for us, I'm saying detrimental for, yeah, even one of our, our members of our staff, and we need to make sure that he gets a fair process. And I don't want to disrupt that process and have something slip or be missed.
Okay, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
No.
Mr. Solura?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm voting no on the amendment, because I want fair process. I want the fair process to occur. And I'm sorry, I made a mistake, but there's been a lot going on, I want to make sure that there's a fair process that occurs for this.
Mr. Solura?
No.
Mr. Curtis?
No. That motion fails.
The amendment fails.
The amendment fails. Okay, so we go back to the original.
H2?
H2. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
No.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That item passes 4-1. Moving on to H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion to accept H3?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis, discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Uh, moving on to items I, 1 through 12, without objection from my colleagues, I will read items 1 through 12 consent agenda together. Items I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following administrators as credentialed evaluators for the purpose of the Ohio Principal Evaluation System, OPEZ, and the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, OTES. Excuse me, and the individuals are listed, they're on the agenda. 2, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a verification services... Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a verification services agreement with K-12 School Consultants LLC for services related to the student residency, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. I3, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing media center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. I4, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following list of textbooks to be deleted from inventory upon the recommendation of the superintendent, and they are also listed there below. I5, that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the Zones of Regulation program to be used in grades K, K, excuse me, pre-K through 12. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum Technology Meeting on October 9th, 2017. This is funded with the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addictive Services Bureau of Prevention, of Prevention Grant. I6, that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the Ready Test A through Z program to be used at Samuel Bissel Elementary School at a cost of $719.40 for one year. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on October 9th, 2017. This is a general fund expense. Seven, excuse me, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the continuous improvement plans for the district and the Twinsburg, and for the Twinsburg High School, RV Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissel Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School as recommended by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on October 9th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. Eight, that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the Title I Parent Involvement Policy that was approved at the Title I Meeting held on October 11th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. Nine, that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the updated Ohio's Learning Standards for English Language Arts. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum Technology Meeting on October 9th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. Ten, that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the updated Ohio's Learning Standards for Mathematics. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum Technology Meeting on October 9th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. Eleven, that the Twinsburg Board of Education directs the superintendent to approve on an as-needed basis an expulsion hearing, an expulsion appeal hearing designee for the Board of Education for the 2017-2018 school year, Ronald L. Victor E. D. D., at an hourly rate of $150 plus mileage at 55 cents per hour. This is a general fund expense, as sent to the board under separate cover. And 12, that the Twinsburg Board of Education directs the superintendent to approve on an as-needed basis an expulsion appeal hearing designee for the Board of Education for the 2017-2018 school year, Ernest L. Wilkerson, Jr., Esquire, at an hourly rate of $160 plus mileage at 55 cents per mile. This is a general fund expense, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion to accept items I, 1 through 12?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any discussion, anything that you would add, Mrs. Powers?
I think Mrs. Davis covered most of this in the committee report for Curriculum Technology.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. I13, excuse me, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County for a teacher of hearing impaired for up to 12 hours at a rate of $84.88 per hour, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Do I have a motion for items I13?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Discussion. None. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Abstain. And that passes 4-1 abstention. And items I14, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts and purchases foundations for preschool classroom resource kits at a cost of $390.96. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on October 9th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement fund expense. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Okay, moving on, we are, we're going to miscellaneous. Item J, do we have any items for miscellaneous?
I would just like to thank the community members that came up and expressed their opinions, every monstrosity. I know it's difficult to put yourself in, in front of individuals, but I think it's important that people are willing to do that. So, I thank you for those of you that were able to attend the meeting as well as speak your voice.
Any other items for miscellaneous?
Just continue to reinforce that our executive session topic stays executive session, and I would hope that it would not be discussed in public. And there's a process and reason why we do that.
Absolutely. Okay. There are no more items for miscellaneous. We move on to item K, executive session. The Board of Education enters, will enter into executive session at 8:55. To consider the employment and discipline of a public employee per board policy, 0166A. I will make the motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item passes 5-0. We will go into executive session. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting.